Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is our second meeting of the day. Hope everybody had a good lunch. Today is Tuesday, February 24th. This is a regular voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Any introductions?
You know, Mayor, I do have an introduction this time. I noticed Margot Christiansen's sitting here with us. This last weekend, her and her husband brought a pretty good honor home to Prescott. Margot, why don't you come up and tell us what happened?
Not yet.[31.41][31.41](Laughter). Not yet.
We now have the number-one residence-in hotel in the country, and they were awarded that honor in Washington this last weekend. So, good job, Margot.[44.82][44.82](Applause).
Okay, that out of the way. Congratulations, Margot. That's great. We're honored today to have Reverend Diane Dixon of the United Church of Prescott will lead us in the invocation, and Councilwoman Wilcox will lead in the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we pray that this council has the courage and wisdom to choose what is right and correct for the healthy growth of this community. We pray for compassionate listening that allows each person to truly be heard, and that common sense prevails in the decisions that are best for our future. We hold this council and this town of Prescott in God's loving light and pray for peace and understanding. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Kirkendorf.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kukneal.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Lozelle.
Here.
All present.
Okay. Any announcements?
No announcements, Mayor.
Okay. Our first presentation. You're going to make the introductions, Mark.
Sure, I'll make the introductions. Mayor, from WIFA, we have Trish incognito and Sarah Conrad here to present you, Mayor, with an award, and tell us a little bit about it.
How did you make the check?[182.45][182.45](Laughter).
We'll talk about it later.
Okay.[186.34][186.34](Laughter). Come on up.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. First of all, I wanted to thank you all for inviting us here to present this award on behalf of WIFA to the city of Prescott.
Can you explain what WIFA is?
Yes.[212.34][212.34](Laughter).
I know, but the public...
Sure. So, WIFA is the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, and we're basically an independent agency of the state, and we provide funding for drinking water, wastewater, water reclamation, and stormwater projects. And so, we've partnered with the city on several of the city's water and wastewater projects, and we've been very excited about that whole experience. It's been going on for years, and Mark and I work together very closely. I am Tricia Cognito. I am WIFA's CFO, and with me today, I have Sarah Conrad, WIFA project manager. We talked about who WIFA is. We're also thrilled to announce the city of Prescott is the winner of WIFA's Clean Water Project of the Year for your airport water reclamation facility expansion. This was a great project. Our Project of the Year awards were created to recognize the most exceptional WIFA projects demonstrated by their performance in resolving water quality or public health issues, cooperative funding efforts, sustainability, and outstanding project management. The city project we are here to recognize exhibits many of these attributes. Before I turn it over to Sarah to discuss some of the technical aspects of the project, I'd like to highlight the fiscal sustainability the city demonstrated. Planning for such an extensive and important project involved anticipating system users' future needs and demands, as well as setting rates appropriately. This foresight and planning allowed the city to complete this essential infrastructure improvement project effectively and efficiently.
So, I'm the project manager for WIFA, and I take care of the northern counties of the state. So, in that role, I've had the opportunity to work directly with the city and city staff on this and other projects. I've been so impressed with the city's handling of this massive project that when it became time to nominate projects for the Project of the Year award, Trish and I were happy to nominate this project, and then we were thrilled when our board of directors selected it. The airport reclamation facility is one of the projects that we like to highlight when we give presentations around the state, and that's because of its green components. The airport plant produces an increased volume of Class A-plus reclaimed water, which is water that can be reused, and as everyone knows here in Arizona, that's something we really need to be doing every opportunity we get. Managing a project of this scale takes considerable skill, and from early on in the application process, city staff was very well organized, attentive to detail, very responsive, and ready to talk about the project, different project components. We especially appreciated our interactions with Mark Woodfield, Melissa Busby, Teresa Ogul, Jeff Lowe, and the entire capital programs team. So, we're very pleased to present this plaque to the city of Prescott for this exceptional project. The plaque says, "City of Prescott for the Airport Water Reclamation Facility Expansion in recognition of your focus on fiscal sustainability, exceptional project management, and commitment to improving Arizona's quality of life through wastewater infrastructure upgrades."[417.56][417.56](Applause).
I'm assuming we're current on our payments?[428.12][428.12](Laughter). Got that out of the way, Mark. So, the check's in the mail, right? Thanks very much, and on behalf of the city, it's certainly a pleasure for me to be able to accept this. Henry, why don't you come up here, and I'm going to give you this mic?
Okay.
And I know you have some things that you want to talk about. But, you know, Mark pays the bills, but Henry gets the work done. So, we've got a great team.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It is indeed an honor and pleasure to receive this award. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There are quite a few people to thank. First of all, the mayor and council city manager for all the support that they have given us, WIFA board, Sarah and Tricia have been with us all the way from the beginning to the end. Thank you so much. But there are really quite a few of city staff that have been involved with this from the beginning, and there are so many other people that I'd like to name, but we can't name them all. But if I may, I'd like just to, a few people more involved in major, when it comes to finance, I want to thank Mark Woodfield and really Melissa Busby. Thank you for all your help and support. In public works, Joel Berman, Scott Gergorio, Superintendent of our wastewater, I don't see Scott, oh, here is Scott, Craig Dossett, major, major help. Thank you all for being here. Jeff Lowe, Jimmy Headley, Teresa Ogul, Bruce Cannavan, Steve Oros, and Amanda Richardson. They're all here. Thank you all for getting this done.[541.29][541.29](Applause). In fact, we know it turned out so well that Mayor drank the water out of the treatment plant.
We did.
So, very soon, we'll be coming before you to talk about possible next phase, which is centralization of our treatment plan, and that's all would be possible because of what we just accomplished. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Talk to them about money.
They've offered money any time we need it. So, thank you.
Okay.[578.16][578.16](Applause). Thanks. Thanks very much. That's great.[582.16][582.16](Applause). Okay. Henry?
Yes, sir.
This goes to the Wall of Honor at your place.
Thank you.
Okay.
That goes to your plan.
Okay, let's go to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item 1A, approval of minutes for the council meetings held on January 27, 2015, and February 3, 2015. Item B, approval to purchase 18-inch removable bollards and traffic-related sleeves for installation on South Montezuma Street Whiskey Row from Blue Amber Technologies Incorporated in amount not to exceed $19,808.23. And C, approval of payment of attorney fees for outside legal counsel to the law from Upgoing Roberts, Rubin, Ragna, Enos, and Treadwell Rubin in amount of $14,773.
Any questions? Comments? Chris and I had one questioned each other, and neither one of us had the answer. Do these drop down in the ground, or do they come out of the sleeve and be kept some of the place?
The sleeve is installed in the ground. The bollards are placed inside the sleeves where they presumably sit on a collar or there's some other restraint so that they sit at the correct height. After the event is done, they will be physically removed by hand and stored at a different location.
So, they don't drop down in and stay with a lid on top of?
Well, there will be a lid, just like a valve, a valve cap, which you see in the street very commonly, but they will be removed and replaced when necessary.
Well, Chris had several photographs of that area when we had thousands of people, and this will certainly be an enhancement for safety to keep that block safer. So, very good. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1C.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Let's go to the regular agenda. Item A.
Item 2A, appointment of members to various city boards, commissions, and committees to fill vacancies occurring in calendar year 2015. Mayor and council, in 2011, the council established a policy for membership on boards, commissions, and committees. That policy set forth the procedures for making appointments. The appointment process provides for review and recommendation of applicants by the council appointment committee, and then presentation to the full council for approval. In 2015, there are approximately 12 positions whose terms expire. In January of this year, all of those members whose terms expire indicated their interest in continuing to serve. In February, the council appointment committee met to review and discuss the upcoming vacancies and determine recommendations for appointments. Before you today are the council appointment committee's recommendation for appointments for the 2015 vacancies to the various boards, commissions, and committees. Also, there are a few of the members up for consideration that are here with us today, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. First, as the chairman of the council appointment committee, I would like to thank the volunteers who spend many hours serving this community. It's an immeasurable amount of time that some of you folks commit to the city. Thank you very much for that. And with the recommendation of the three-member committee, myself, I believe Mr. Blair, and Mr. Arnold, we reviewed all the applications again, and what we would like to do is move to approve the council appointment committee's recommendation for appointments to the city's various boards and commissions and committees to fill the vacancies during calendar year 2015. As the clerk pointed out, there's no changes. Again, thank you very much for volunteering to help the city and move us forward, and appreciate your contribution.
Second. Those that are here, do you want to acknowledge them and give them the...
Want to take a vote first?
Yeah, we have, who's second?
Greg.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Let's vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Now, we'd like to invite them up front so that everybody out in TV land can see who our volunteers are and who helps this city.
Mark, maybe you could put this sheet up, and it's got the names, and might help a little bit there.
I'd like to face the stage.
There we go.
And raise your right hand, and speak after me. I state your name. You solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of member of the, state your board, according to the best of my ability. So, help me God. Thank you. Thank you all.[971.13][971.13](Applause).
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate the work you do. Item B.
Item B, adoption of resolution number 4279-1488, establishing a policy for the acceptance of public art.
Mayor and council, thank you. The item that you see before you is the culmination of a significant amount of work from the community that started back in 2012, when the then-seeded council received a presentation on a concept for an ad hoc group to formulate a public art policy for future discussion. In January of this year, you'll recall that Cindy Gresser updated the council about the completion of the draft policy, and that is before you today in a finalized format and with an enacting resolution for the guidelines for acceptance of public art. A couple of key points from there. The guidelines are intended to ensure that public art accepted by the city is of the highest quality, enhances the aesthetic character of the community's public spaces, advances the public understanding of art, and does not place an undue burden on the city for maintenance, security, or public safety of that art. A few other key elements of the standards. There are general standards included that describe public art and identify criteria for acceptance. It includes a significant outline for a process for acceptance and review of a proposed donation. Includes site selection requirements. That includes stakeholder review, consideration of other facilities, ADA compliance, engineering requirements, and site plan review. Installation cost considerations and risk management review. Clarification of responsibilities of the parties after installation. A process for deaccession of works of art after acceptance should that be necessary, and it has quite a few guidelines for that. And then, information on the Visual Artists Rights Act. Perhaps most important within the concept with these elements of the guidelines are that the guidelines and completion of the review process would be overseen by a newly-created Art in Public Places Committee. If the guidelines are approved today, I would expect to bring forward a resolution authorizing an Art in Public Places Committee as a standing committee of the city council to your March voting meeting. And with that, I did want to point out that Cindy Gresser is in attendance today, and thank her so much, and the group that she brought together for all of their patience and hard work bringing this forward, and turn it back to the city council for any questions.
That it?
That's it.
Cindy, come on up. Mark, we'll need to get some payroll information from you.
Right.
For all the work you've done.
Right on.[1157.28][1157.28](Laughter).
Talk to us. Tell us what you've done.
Tell us what we've done. Well, we've written, we've written a resolution there for you to approve, hopefully. I believe that this is a wonderful start and a process to bring public art to the city of Prescott in an organized fashion. Simply, some of the things that have happened in the past could have been avoided by this very simple document that provides process, that provides standards, and puts another committee in place so that the city council does not have to deal with this. We will make our recommendations to you and for your approval, but certainly will provide you with a buffer that should provide smooth transactions as we deal with public art in the future.
When might we expect your recommendations for the committee?
You will have those by March 10.
Questions?
Mayor, thank you. I really don't have a question. I'd just like to make a statement for the record that this particular art policy is not for federal property, state property, county property, school district property, or private property. This is merely, for an example, parks, or the library, or in front of our building here.
City-owned.
City-owned property. I just wanted to make that clear for everybody because there's been some people not reading the entire proposal.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, thank you. Thank you again for putting this together, bringing it to us. Thank you, staff, for addressing a few of the concerns, including insurance and things of that nature. I'm more comfortable with it as it's proposed now and look forward to voting on it.
Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, Cindy, once again, simple thank you, and I'm sure that this document will probably look a lot different in 20 years, maybe 10 years, maybe one month, but it's a great place to start. We've needed it for a long time. So, thanks for putting the work in and getting it done.
Pleasure.
I just have a question for our assistant city manager. When it comes to maintenance of public art, the word undue burden is very subjective in my mind. What does that mean?
Well, the review process includes a process, I'm trying to get to the right page here, just one second. I thought it could go...
The reason why I ask the question, I'm sure this young lady knows it, that there's been a lot of public art that's been dismantled and taken down throughout the state of Arizona because of lack of maintenance. So, I want to make sure that the city of Prescott is not painting itself in a corner with this policy, with this statement.
I don't think so, and part of that is with the review process, if you look at Section D, it talks about installation costs, and then Section E talks about responsibility after installation, and so that will be a very important part of the review process. If there is a type of installation that seems that it would require a lot of work afterwards, then an agreement would likely need to be drafted on who would be responsible for that, and if that is the artist, then the artist would remain responsible. And I would also point out that with most committees or processes of this nature, there is a deaccession process included, and that is a very important part of this policy because if there's some irreparable damage done to a piece of artwork, or there's some huge community outcry that requires some review after the fact of a piece of art that's been installed, the deaccession, you know, process is something that this committee would want to look at and follow in order to take out a piece of art from the city's public art collection if something came up, and there's a whole list of reasons why that might happen, and that's very common in an art policy for a community.
And one of the reasons why I make that comment is because I think that at some point through the attorney's office, and the policy shouldn't be cumbersome, but through the attorney's office and going through assessment, you know, we had a piece of public art that was put in front of the hospital that had to do with a bull, and it created a lot of angst in the community, but also that bull was finally installed at a place that everybody agreed with. However, question becomes, remains that that statue and the statues we have in other places, if they're maintained, this thing sits on a pedestal and there's some rust around it, who's maintaining those things, and how much of a public hazard do we subject ourselves to in case somebody gets hurt with them? I mean, I saw kids climbing on the bull the other day. I wanted to get on it, but I'm too fat. However, I think that there's some real need to make sure that whatever we have catalogued as far as public art is looked at by our folks at the legal department or somebody over a period of time to make sure it's all good.
And I believe within the policy, we have allowances to go to city staff within planning, within legal, to ask them questions just like that. How much liability is there involved? Do we have to concern ourselves with this? And I would say that undue burden on the city equals cost. And so, that's going to come into the, play into the decisions of the committee as they review works of public art or donation.
And I do appreciate that because over the time, there has been some things that were tried to be installed in the city of Prescott that had risked...
Correct.
...to them, and I think we need to be very keen to that.
Yeah, and that's why this policy is so important, because it will review those and hopefully bypass the ones that have a high-risk level.
Anyone in the public have a comment? Jim? Okay. Seeing none, do we have a motion? Oh.
I have one comment.
I'm sorry.
I don't want to delay the meeting, but thank you very much, Cindy, and all of those who worked on it. I look forward to turning our trash dumpsters into works of art.[1533.33][1533.33](Laughter).
That was what you had to say.
That's what I had to say.
She can't do it. I know a place where she can paint all day long.[1543.13][1543.13](Laughter).
Thank you, Mayor. Ackling fellow council, thank you, Cindy. Had we've had such a policy in place to begin with, we may not have had the bench debacle where something was constructed with no sense of liability for the public using something in city right of way. So, anyway, thank you for the work. Hopefully, this is successful, and I look forward to seeing things as they're brought forward. That's my comments.
Okay. With that said, do we have a motion?
Mayor, move to adopt resolution number 4279-1488.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Item C.
Item 2C, adoption of resolution number 4278-1487, approving a low-interest loan of $125,000 to Bradshaw Senior III Prescott LP contingent upon their receipt of a low-income housing tax credit grant from the Arizona Department of Housing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. This item is on your agenda today as a result of your discussions, your February 10 meeting, and the resolution supporting the loan for Bradshaw III is conditioned upon, the loan is contingent upon the successful grant application, the low-income tax finance credit application of Bradshaw III will be submitted by March 2 with the Arizona Department of Housing. That loan amounted to $125,000, 30-year loan with a 3% simple interest. A second condition of the loan would be the city's acceptance of a grant up to $150,000 from the National Affordable Housing Foundation. In the event that both conditions are met, there'd be no net local funding will be required, and no general fund dollars will be expended to support the project. If the application Bradshaw Senior III to the Arizona Department of Housing is successful, we'll be placing items on a future agenda for you to accept both the grant and to exercise the loan. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions and make you aware that Bill Spritzer is here today in the event you have any questions for him.
Okay. Any questions from Tom or Mr. Spritzer?
I'll make a comment. I noticed in the packet that the water for the build-out of the project was previously allocated, so there's no attachment to our alternative water. That's number one. And then, number two, I would ask Tom one more time, what percentage of the folks that live in the project, and I hate the word project because it sounds so terrible, you know, we think of projects, we think of Chicago or New York or something like that, but this has been an ongoing project in the city. What portion of that are occupied by people that are still in the workforce here in the city?
You know, that might be a good question for Mr. Spritzer. I can tell you that 100% of the occupants' income qualify under the Arizona Department of Housing low-income project, and the project has been underway since 2007, and it's a five-phase project, and perhaps we can defer that to Mr....
And I appreciate that comment, and I also want to acknowledge the fact that it's been through the water budgeting process, and much of this project has been made available because of the water that we set aside in the alternative water portfolio for projects such as this. So, yeah, I would like an answer to the question, Mr. Spritzer.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. The Bradshaw, the Bradshaw campus consists of three phases currently. We have two phases of senior that total 92 units, and we have a component that has no age restriction, 52 units. So, 144 units, 52 units, where about 40% of our residents are currently employed, and I'm talking about 40% of the households. And I'm talking about 40% of the households.
Thank you very much for the comment, because a lot of times, projects like this get a bad rap as just simply being for the elderly, when indeed, this project was never designed that way to begin with.
Any other questions?
Mayor, it just seems like this is a good project. To be clear, that it's not city of Prescott money. We're just acting as an agent for this money to pass through to this, and it seems like once it gets paid back to us, we can even put this money towards yet another project to help housing. Isn't that true?
That's my understa...yes, that is true.
Okay. Good deal.
Anyone else? Comments from the public? Bill, we're ready to vote. We need a motion.
Mayor, move to adopt resolution number 4278-1487.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item D?
Approval of an application of the Arizona, to the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality for a Water Quality Implementation Grant for the Prescott Rodeo Grounds Runoff and Sediment Control Project, $150,000, 60% grant, 40% city.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. This item is requesting approval to submit a grant application for funding through the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, and if awarded, the funds will be used to design and construct sediment and runoff control basins at the Prescott Rodeo Grounds to reduce pollutants discharged into Miller Creek. The Prescott, or, excuse me, the Rodeo Grounds is a 34-acre site owned by the city and is currently leased out to the Prescott Frontier Days, which is an Arizona nonprofit corporation. And the Prescott Frontier Days hosts the annual Prescott Frontier Rodeo every year in July, and in addition to that, they also have week-long, the week-long rodeo, in addition to that, the Rodeo Grounds is used for other equestrian and livestock events for about six months out of the year, primarily on weekends between May and October. The Rodeo Grounds drain into Miller Creek, which is a waterway listed as a water quality impaired for E. coli under the environmental, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Miller Creek is a tributary to Granite Creek, which is also listed as a water that is impaired for E. coli bacteria and also dissolved oxygen. Due to the nature of the activities taking place at the Rodeo Grounds, this site is considered a potential hotspot for pollutants because livestock waste can be detrimental to water quality. The livestock manure contains nutrients like nitrogen and phosphorus, and they may contribute to the water quality impairment downstream in Watson Lake. Livestock manure can also contribute pathogens such as viruses, parasites, and bacteria such as fecal coliform and E. coli. And again, E. coli in a water body is an indicator of fecal contamination, which can represent a potential harm to the public health. Miller Creek is a tributary of Granite Creek. Both creeks are listed as impaired for E. coli. Sediment is another pollutant that may be contributing to the water impairment because of the extent of unpaved surfaces on the site over at the Rodeo Grounds. An excess sediment has many potential water quality impacts, such as transporting other pollutants, and those things are all, such as nutrients and bacteria, which are also problems in the upper Granite Creek watershed. I should probably put on my glasses. The Prescott Rodeo Grounds Runoff and Sediment Control Project proposes to address sediment and other pollutants that may contribute to water quality impairments in Miller Creek, Granite Creek, and Watson Lake by managing the runoff from the site. A series of sediment and water quality basins would be installed in two perimeter locations to intercept the drainage, capture and contain the sediment, and slow down the, and filter the runoff before it gets discharged directly into Miller Creek. The Rodeo Grounds project will contribute to the larger goal of water quality improvement in the watershed and assist the city in meeting wasteload allocations defined in the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality draft Watson Lake total maximum daily load, and also the draft Upper Granite Creek watershed E. coli total maximum daily load. The project will reduce the discharge of sediment and sediment-related pollutants into Miller Creek from the Rodeo Grounds by providing a settling basin to capture sediment, and also a series of stabilized water quality basins that will promote filtration. And the city is responding to a recommendation from the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality to address potential pollutant contribution from city properties under the Arizona's Pollutant Discharge Elimination System stormwater permit. Since there are now five impaired water bodies within the city and another pending designation, stormwater discharges to impaired waterways are being examined, and ADEQ believes this site is a significant contributor of pollutants. And while the Rodeo Grounds is not considered a municipal operation, it is a city property, and because the Rodeo Ground is such an important part of the community, the city is seeking to ensure that the site is in compliance with all state and federal regulations. The grant requested will fund 60% or roughly $90,000 of an estimated $150,000 project. The city's match would be 40% or $60,000. And the city's match can be made through a combination of in-kind funds such as personnel costs, construction and maintenance activities using city equipment, volunteer time, and a cash contribution if so desired. And if awarded, the project would start in FY '16, which would be after July 1st of this year. It is anticipated the city's share of the project would be met through in-kind matching. However, facilities management is going to go ahead and request $25,000 in the FY '16 budget in the event we do need to do a cash contribution for this project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Charlie?
Mayor, thank you. Stephanie, as you all are looking at this project and understanding that the use of the Rodeo Grounds is anticipated to potentially go up, we're talking about master plans and alternative uses for aspects of the Rodeo Grounds, will this project be geared towards expansion? Will it have the ability to expand, et cetera?
Mayor and Council, I believe the answer to that question is, there's so much that runs across the property that this project will be designed to receive those waters and hopefully slow them down and clean them up a little bit before they discharge into the creek. Where it's being built is on the north side of the project, so if we expand buildings, if anything, maybe the water will get diverted around where it's currently running into probably the same filtration area. I think it takes up about 300 linear feet roughly on both sides to the inlet to the creek, so the water would consolidate there and be slowed down, but I don't think that any kind of reconstruction over at the Rodeo Grounds will necessarily impact the flow of water that's coming into here. It'll just probably be diverted around.
And then ongoing maintenance obligations with a setup like this?
Ongoing maintenance is more than likely going to be performed between the Street Maintenance Division and the Recreation Services Department. Usually, if there's live plants in the project, rec services will maintain that portion of it, and then street maintenance would maintain anything else outside of that that's not living. And it's mostly removing the sediment from the basins as it builds up, maybe a couple times a year.
Great, thank you.
Joe?
Thank you, Mayor. Year after year, I've shared with my counsel my thought processes on the use of expenditures from every municipal revenue bucket that we have for priorities. Here's a priority issue that we have now with ADEQ. I would contend that the rodeo is a huge asset delivered from tourism promotion. The voters put in the toolbox for the city to work with, a voter-passed initiative for tourism promotion, as well as parks and rec development, of which is falls into both. I would suggest that the $25,000 that's being sought be dedicated towards funding the cleanup that the rodeo and that activity does. I mean, here we are charging again the general fund, or looking at charging the general fund, when we have one of the very tools that the voters gave us to work with, so that we don't further damage the general fund. So I'm just suggesting that maybe the money that we need for this come out of the bed tax dollars for tourism.
Councilman Lamerson, I'm sure that the capital card reflects the bed tax for that project.
One of our greenways trails runs down Miller Creek by the Rodeo Grounds. Will the settling basins be designed around the trail, or will the trail be relocated in and around the basins?
Councilwoman Wilcox, I'm not sure where the trail is. These ponds, if you're familiar with the Rodeo Grounds and where the county building is on Fair Street, it's like right there on that end. Does that trail go through there?
It ends right there.
Okay, I don't believe it interferes because where the project is, is on the Rodeo Grounds. I'm not familiar that the trail's on the Rodeo Grounds. I think it's maybe more inside that area where the creek actually runs.
Okay, something to keep in mind when you're actually doing the design work.
Will do.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie, I just, so I can wrap my head around this, I don't juggle the numbers as well as Mark does. So 60,000 they're asking, and then an additional 25, so 85,000 total, correct?
Councilman, the entire city's share would be the 60,000, either through in-kind.
Okay.
So 25 of the 60 could be cash contribution.
Okay, I got you. And then, I'm kind of leaning what Jim was saying, but I thought of, could we, and I don't want to strain any budget, but could we use this, Craig or Mark, with that new fee we put on the sanitation bill for clean water watershed?
Good question.
Something to think about.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
As you know, it all flows either, in this particular case, Watson Lake or Willow Lake, and that was the intent and the focus of that fee.
It all goes downhill, and payday's on Friday.
Mayor, in follow-up to both of those comments, I'm definitely willing to vote on this and pass it today. If staff would come back and just make us aware of where the funds ultimately are going to come from, because it, there's a couple ideas, and I didn't even think of that. I mean, that's a great idea, right? That's exactly what that fee's for.
Right.
So if you all want to come back and let us know, that'd be great.
As Stephanie indicated, Councilman, this will be a fiscal year '16 budget item, so during that process, we will inform you at that time.
The money is yet to come. Anyone else? Comments from the public? Dan must be gone.
Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve submission of an application to the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality for a Water Quality Implementation Grant for the Prescott Rodeo Grounds Runoff and Sediment Control Project.
Second. Made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
We're ready.
Item 2E, award of city contract number 2015-093 for professional building assessment services to ISES Corporation using federal contract number GS21F-0045W pricing in the amount of $32,310.
Mayor and Council, approval of this item will award a contract to ISES Corporation for doing building assessments on five fire stations using a federal contract for pricing. The stations range in age from 14 years old to about 35 years old, and they were identified in the recent ICMA Operational Analysis Report as having various issues that need to be programmed for repair or improvement in upcoming budgets. The Facilities Management Division has been documenting the city's building infrastructure and critical components through their new software system. It's called Lucity. It's a maintenance management system, and the software program is already in use by the Public Works Department for documenting the city's utilities infrastructure. Each fire station and its critical components will be inventoried, programmed for maintenance or replacement, and have all assets, makes, models, and serial numbers located, recorded, name-plated, barcoded, photographed, and assessed for its current condition. Examples of building infrastructure and critical components include the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, plumbing components, electrical equipment, life safety systems, and such. ISES Corporation's assessment report information can be input into our maintenance management system, and they provide the electronic records for the conditions of these facilities to enable maintenance and capital planning decisions, so we can program out over the years what we're going to plan to do at each facility. And funding of $32,310 is in the FY '15 budget in the Facilities Maintenance Fund for this item. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Mayor, thank you. Stephanie, you brought us one of these before, and I wasn't a huge believer in having some third party come in, evaluate our buildings, and do all of this work and the money we were paying for it, but as I've researched it more, I think that it is prudent, especially given our forecasted budget issues. We really need to understand what we're coming up against. In looking at the proposal and wanting to understand a little bit more about where our current budget is, I would be inclined to want to add more of the Priority Two group at least to the list, and I wanted to get some feedback about the budget constraint and why we're only doing Priority Group One.
Councilman, when we asked ISES to give us a quote, our main concern was trying to get the fire stations done in the current year budget so we can start programming the capital needs for those stations in FY '16. When we saw the amount, we knew it wasn't as, we didn't have as much money in this fiscal year as we needed to do all of the assessments, so we just limited it to the fire stations for the current fiscal year, FY '15, but we plan to do the additional facilities in future fiscal years. Our hope is to do assessments on most of our facilities so that we can adequately program our capital needs for maintenance.
Absolutely. You know, this is going to go against what I'm going to say a little bit later when we're talking about nickels and dimes, but it seems to me that there is an advantage to grouping some of these together. I recently went through the police department and realized that we have some pretty significant challenges that we're facing there, and breaking it down to a per-square-footage basis, the fire stations were paying about a dollar a square foot for the evaluation, just a little bit over. If we were to add Priority Group Number Two, we're paying about 27 cents a square foot. You know, the library was built in 2005. It's going to start facing some challenges, but it would seem to me, especially given that we just changed the impact fees for police and fire and looking at expansion plans, I'd like to see at least the police station of Group Two included, or all of Group Two, for an additional $15,680. That would be for, excuse me, for $22,000, that would be all the city hall, police station, and library, or just the police station for $6,800, assuming they would match the, their quote on the per-square-footage cost.
Group One and Two would be $46,050. Is that what you were looking at, Councilman?
Correct. They broke down the prices. It's $32,310 for Group One, which are all the fire stations. Group Two only is $22,120. There's a discount if you do Groups One and Two together of $8,380.
If the council would like to vote on the $46,050, I'm sure ISES will be glad to do the Group Two buildings also while they're here. We just need to get it planned.
And so I guess my question there would be to either the city manager or our finance director about what we have capacity in the budget for with this, but it seems like we could save almost $10,000 by doing it now instead of waiting.
Well, as we talked about, we have a $1 to $2 million issue gap, if you will, for the fiscal year '16 budget. On the other hand, what you're describing is an investment in knowing, you know, providing information and knowing or better defining or moving towards a better definition of what our unfunded liabilities are with respect to our facilities' assets, so as you said, there's kind of a contradiction here. On the one hand, we're looking at the mountain of unsolved expenses. On the other hand, we do have some flexibility, so I'm not going to sit here and say that we can't spend a dime more. Certainly, we can have the flexibility. I'm not going to say that it makes the budget issue next year that much worse because we typically will under, and do underexpend our budget in the current fiscal year. So I think there's an argument in favor of this as an investment for better identifying and managing our assets. It's not going to materially change the challenge that we have for next fiscal year. We can fine $10,000 or $20,000, you know, that's not going to affect our balancing and resolving next fiscal year.
So I want to hear from everybody else as well, but I think my proposal would be a motion that would basically say an approval up to the $46,050, and then allow you guys to work with the company to determine on Group Two if we need to do all those right now, but let's take advantage of the... now, but let's take advantage of the discount. It does save us the $10,000 we'd probably end up spending next year. Thank you.
Okay, Jim.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of concerns as we're going into the budget. I guess we have sort of a clearinghouse approach on things to build up to the potential budget proposal for different things. You know, over the last several years, we've heard more than once that the majority of the fire department's calls have nothing to do with fire. As a matter of fact, in a quasi-judicial environment, sworn given testimony by members of the fire department, less than 2% of their actual time is spent fighting fires. I have questions with regards to how much asset do we really have in fire buildings that may be antiquated to the service that we're actually delivering to the demographic changes that have taken place in the city of Prescott over the years? What we once had with old buildings that were built out of, you know, wood and blocks and things like that that could burn to what we today by code require be built with fire-retardant materials, et cetera, and I would remind us, the folks that we look for to keep this community safe from fires, the fire department, not wood cutters and wood chippers out of the private sector. So I guess my questions have to do with, while I don't want my fire department, or my police department, or my sewer department, or anybody else that work for the city delivering valuable public service to be subjected to bad exhausts and things like that, or chemical inhalations and various things like that, that's one thing. But to go in and makeshift antiquated buildings to provide a service level of something that may be antiquated with regards to the service we actually deliver to the constituents of Prescott today, sometimes I wonder if we're not looking at the wrong model. Maybe the model of the fire department for the city of Prescott needs to be a little different than it used to be, when the fire department itself tells us, gosh, guys, we very rarely fight a fire. We spend less than 2% of our time fighting fires. However, we're in the middle of the woods, and we got to take care of the woods because they're our biggest present danger to the city. So I just question sometimes the way we approach spending public money for public facility. And I am concerned with that process immensely. So I'm sharing my thought processes with you, Stephanie. It's not that I'm mad at the fire department. It's not that I'm mad at anybody. I'm not mad. I'm trying to get a grip around how we keep spending and delivering service levels to the citizens of Prescott. If indeed we need to change our models, do the facilities that we have today meet the model that we need in the year 2016?
Councilman, I spoke briefly with Chief Light regarding the fire stations because the fire stations haven't been in our facilities management fund historically, but effective July 1st with the next fiscal year, the fire stations are coming into the facilities management fund. My first question was, if you could start over and build the fire stations wherever you wanted, are they kind of where you would want them? And basically, the answer was yes, because of response times, they are located in good locations. Right now, they are what we have, so to get them assessed, I think, is prudent, so we can find out what is wrong with them, what kind of dollars are we talking for the maintenance, to get the maintenance up to where it needs to be, the facilities up to where they need to be. Regardless of the model that the fire department's using for how they're locating their resources, if it did turn out we wanted to dispose of one of these stations, at a minimum, I would think we'd want to know what the deficiencies are so that we could correct them, so we could get the best price of the asset if it was ever to be sold at some point. It's prudent for us to maintain our assets.
Thank you for your comments. I think it's prudent to maintain our assets, too. I just haven't yet heard a value-added statement with, what I have heard is non-value-added, and I've heard it from the department itself a number of different times about the service and what we deliver. And it brings a question to my mind, for what we request out of our fire department today, do we have the right infrastructure for them to do that job? And I think it's always important for the taxpayer to hear, the residents to hear, exactly what does response time mean to them, and it's more than just the time to keep their house from burning down. It has to do with an insurance rating that may go astronomical, very similar to being, similar to being in a district like out in Prescott Valley where their insurance rate may be different than ours, things like that. So I'm just trying to get to an area that I feel comfortable with what we're doing. The idea is we're taking an assessment of these things. I would like some of the information I'm asking for to be forwarded. I would like that information.
I'll see if they could provide that, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Greg.
I'm in a partial agreement with Councilman Arnold as far as nickels and dimes adding up to dollars. Stephanie, I'm aware of this company and the program and the importance of keeping track of your assets. My concern is, whether we do it in group one, two, three, we're still talking about a considerable amount of money, and we're getting ready to go into a budget discussions with possible some serious ramifications next year. I personally would not, would not consider spending the money right now until we know more of a picture of next year. And on top of that, and I know that, I think right now, if we have any life safety problems, I think we've got enough qualified people that can address those immediate problems and identify them currently on staff to identify those things right now.
Mayor, can I ask, Greg, can I ask you just a question and follow-up? During the last few budget discussions, some members of the council have been bringing up potentially wanting to go to the public about some things associated with public safety. Would it be beneficial to know what our obligations are going to be so that if that were to go forward, there would be a clear description of where funds may be used? I agree. It's a big sum of money to spend today.
And I'm not saying not to spend it this year, but we've got several budget meetings, and maybe bring it back before the end of fiscal year as we have a better picture of our next year's budget.
Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The question that pops up in my mind is, can we even afford to fix what we find out is wrong, you know, but I guess you got to find it out anyway. The question is, they're going to put barcodes on everything. Do we get barcode scanners and software that go with that ourselves?
Councilman, or Mayor Protem, it's not included in the price to get the scanners. The scanners we're planning on getting ourselves are only like a couple, I think they're about $1,200 bucks if we get a couple of them.
I think there's even an app you can even use smartphones to read it and everything.
It's on your phone, yeah.
Well, I just know, I've seen this kind of system get used on buses out at Humboldt Unified. They have barcodes all over those buses, and the guy every day before he drives the bus has to walk around and scan all those barcodes pertaining to tires, pertaining to brakes, pertaining to everything. And I could see how that could translate into emergency response equipment as well, and you just get a more current feel of what's going on. So I didn't know if that was included in this, or do we plan, if we get this, are we planning on getting scanners so we can update this as we go along, and will we have the software to do that?
The answer would be yes, Mayor Protem. We plan on getting the scanners. Like Councilman Lizelle said, you can actually get an iPhone app or a smartphone app to do the scanning. All of, the two buildings we had done, the vendor came through, they looked at everything, they recorded everything, and it was a wonderful report that we got back showing us what the state of the facilities were. Same here. They'll put the barcodes on, they do a really good detailed report, and we can import that information right into our maintenance management system so that we have the information on the asset gathered. Plus, we have a, through them, they have a software, a website thing, database, whatever, where they actually, where we can actually forecast out the replacement of all of the equipment. So it works out nicely so we can see at least what's programmed for replacement. Now, yes, there's never enough resources to go around to fund all the repairs, but at least we can see what repairs we have coming down the pipeline and try to prioritize across the city. If there's not enough funding to fix everything, then what are we going to fix on these assets?
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Steve? Stephanie, who, you just inherited this responsibility apparently. Who was taking care of them before?
The fire stations, Mayor?
Yeah, or the buildings, yeah. Who was keeping track of what needed to be done and what?
The fire department was handling the maintenance on their facilities for the most part. They would bring in facilities management on certain things, but for the most part, it was being self-directed.
And that was not working?
Oh, I don't know if it wasn't so much working as much as they, it's not their primary focus. They should be off doing firefighting stuff. And the facilities people, you know, our focus is maintaining the facility. So I think it's going to be a good partnership going forward.
Okay. Comments from the public?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Sandra Smith. I'm at 701 White's Bar. Just a comment on Councilman Arnold's question and Councilman Lizelle's backup on this. It sounds to me, as just a regular person, like if we do the whole thing now, the whole assessment now, it saves the budget something like $8,000 or $10,000 overall.
That's if we do the group one and group two facilities.
The whole thing, as opposed to, so to me, if you can save money by doing big now, instead of piecemealing it and spending more money in the long run, that seems like a good idea to me.
Thank you. My comment is this, if you're reaching out for consolidate one, two, and three, or consolidate one and two, that for only $7,000, you can save $10,000.
16, yes, sir.
Yeah. What of your pleasure? You can take it out of council travel fund. That starts with zero, so.
Well, it's travel and entertainment. Entertainment is the big-ticket item.
We have our own entertainment, yeah.
Marlon, I had another question.
Sure.
Or maybe not a question as much as a comment. It's evidenced by the amount of water that we have left in the assured water portfolio, which has to go to already predetermined lots, and you can't change lots. And the amount of water we have for distribution out of the alternative water portfolio, unless somebody brings water, we're significantly reduced on how much we're going to grow. And if the chief has said that he feels comfortable with the fire stations in the locations they have now to achieve a particular policy of time getting to where they need to go, I think it would be incumbent upon us to maintain the facilities up to a standard that's acceptable to the fire department.
I have a question.
You there?
Now that I think about it.
Okay.
City manager, or Stephanie, the money, is it in the budget for this year?
Councilman, there is money available this fiscal year. It's not going to be spent, and we were going to use those funds to pay for these assessments.
Okay. When the assessments are done, I guess I would like to see them done as much as possible in-house, as best as we can. I understand HVAC and some of those things we can do. However, I know that cost-savings-wise, we have firemen that are also contractors, and we have licensed contractors on staff, and people that are capable of doing a lot of these repairs. And I know back in the day, Tim McElwee had a list of ongoing repairs at all the fire stations that he and a crew did. Over the years, they were sufficient, and I'm not sure that they're sufficient today, but I hope that study tells us what the scope is. And if we can save money, I would hope we do most of that stuff in-house.
Are you talking about once we get the results of the assessment?
Correct.
Yes, those types of things. Once we do, actually go to do the maintenance items, whatever we can't do, because we have a very small facility staff, whatever we can't do with our own staff, then we contract out. For instance, like we don't do HVAC PMs, we have a contracted out to energy savings because we just don't have the staff time available. But anything going forward that can be coordinated, that can be done in-house, then we could definitely do that.
Being frugal comes to mind, like Larison would say, we don't want to build a $120,000 restroom on a trailhead when we start talking about doing what we can do in-house.
Yes, we would look at that, Councilman.
Charlie. Mayor, just in follow-up to your statement and question about doing all three groups, there are proposed savings of doing all three is $16,760 compared to doing them individually. Adding group three in there has approximately an $8,000 savings as well.
Right, that's all that.
So, you know, I would want to hear again from the council, but if we can save that money, and it's ultimately going to help us in our long-term planning, our capital improvement plans, and our budgeting, you know, I'd be willing to go that far as to give the approval for up to the full amount of all three groups, understanding where our priorities lie. You know, I'm open.
You'll hear from the council what made in the motion.
Perfect, then. Mayor, move to award city contract number 2015-093 to ISES Corporation in an amount not to exceed $53,350, which represents all three groups, and a savings of $16,760.
Second.
Okay, the motion made and seconded, and just a comment, this will tell us what is needed in all the buildings.
Yes, Mayor.
And then there will be an attempt in-house to make it as many of those corrections as possible.
Yes, Mayor.
In-house.
Yes. When we get the assessments back, we'll see what they have. It'll allow us to budget in future fiscal years for what needs replacement, et cetera. Anything we can do in-house, we definitely try to.
And you've got that much money in your existing budget that has not been spent?
We have that much in the current fiscal year to cover all of these assessments, and then going forward, it's a matter of prioritization with whatever funding we have available.
And then we won't see it all next year, is that correct?
No, it'll be spread out over probably five years.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Let's vote, please.
Passes 6 to 1. Councilmember Lizelle dissenting.
Thank you.
Okay, item F.
Item 2F, award of city contract number 2015-055 for the airport terminal roof replacement to Central Basin Roofing in the amount of $25,060 airport fund and insurance.
Mayor and honorable city council members, in August of 2013, the hailstorm rolled through the city of Prescott and caused some hail damage to the existing terminal roof. City staff then sent an adjuster to assess the damage. Due to the fact the roof was quite aged and not new, the risk pool did depreciate the actual replacement value. So the city's risk department was awarded funds through the insurance in the amount of $20,284.45. The airport and facilities management division staff conducted a bid process to select a vendor for the replacement of the shingled roof. The site visit was held on February the 3rd, 2015, and the bids were open February the 12th. There was four respondents to this, the contractors, and the lowest apparent bid was Central Basin Roofing located here in Prescott, Arizona, in the amount of $25,060.00. Based on the bid results and the verification of the qualified contractor, the staff does recommend Central Basin Roofing to be awarded this project. The airport department, through the insurance funds that are available on escrow, is $20,294.45, and then the airport department funds or share is $4,766.55 to cover the difference for the $25,060. Is there any questions I may answer?
Question. Steve?
Can we just have the fire department burn it down as a test project? How many-year warranty does that give the thing?
The specifications is for a 20-year warranty to the shingle roof.
Do we get a cheaper, do we get a cheaper price if we only go with a two-year warranty or five? I just have real heartburn with continuing to dump money in something that's antiquated that we're going to get rid of eventually anyhow. So I understand it needs to be done, and the insurance is going to pay a part of that, a big part of that, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that... But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we have a different goal set and not put it off because we're getting a new 20-year roof.
Steve, if we don't put the roof on, then it's going to get moldy, and then we're going to have lawsuits and...
Yeah, Mayor, I'm with Councilman Blair on this one. I think, I mean, this all kind of started back, the spending on this building when we had the gas leak. I wish we would have just evacuated the building and waited for a spark, you know. Not only is it antiquated, but the bottom line is it's too close to the runway for today's standards. It's got to be further back. You know, in, what, '47, when it was built, we had these little tiny planes taking in and out of there. Now we got slurry bombers. Now we got jets. What happens if one of those takes a tumble next to the runway? This gives me heartburn to spend any money on this building, and we keep doing it again and again. And I realize it's necessary, but I think we need to... You know, we don't need a $12 million terminal. We need something that's inexpensive, that we can get built, that's functional, that works for today. So I'm going to actually vote no on this, just out of principle on that. I want to see us get something else done.
Mayor, thank you. In concurrence with my other council members, when this thing blows over, we can surplus the new roofing. The fact that it's being paid for by risk is helping, and I realize we need to keep maintaining this thing until we get rid of it. But I agree with Chris. We need to find something that's economical to replace it as soon as possible. It's difficult when we're going to be now well over $100,000 into upkeep on something that just isn't there anymore.
Gene.
I'd like to remind the council, this amount that John is asking for is half of what is being spent on fixing that little kitchen in the restaurant. So same kind of problem. We keep dumping money into a building we know isn't going to exist, but right now, the short-term fix is what we have to do.
Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. I look at it about the same way my fellow council members do. It's a old, worn-out building that really needs to be bulldozed, but still such time, and I don't see that time on the immediate horizon until we have a new building out there to serve what that building does serve. I mean, at some point, you have to acknowledge, as I believe it was Councilwoman Wilcox said, "This is what we got. It's what we got." And we have personnel that's out there, and we have people that go out there to be served, and it's what we got right now. What's the anticipated longevity of the building? I mean, from a standpoint, do you plan on replacing it in 18 months? You plan on going to get another terminal out there in the next year or two? I mean, do you see that on the horizon?
Well, that's certainly through the direction of the City Council and the senior management staff, but we are working towards that with a goal for some terminal siting assessment, which is ongoing at this time. Yes, sir.
So if that's the case, I agree with these guys. You know, why dump more money into a worn-out building if indeed you're planning on building a new one in a couple of years?
Well, Councilman, we have to have the money to build the new one. We do not have the money to build the new one.
I guess that was my point. He wasn't prepared to say we don't have the money to build a new terminal. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate that.
Or we could do what I do at my age, just paint it. You get five gallons of paint for $100. You have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award City Contract Number 2015-055 to Central Basin Roofing in the amount of $25,060.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to one. Mayor Portem Kukneo dissenting.
A last America's only 150.
You don't have to get good paint, Tim. Okay. Going to Chief.
Item 2G, Approval to Submit a Grant Application to the Arizona Department of Homeland Security Requesting Funding in a Total Amount of $88,500 for Public Safety Equipment Consisting of Eight-Each Twin-Port Specialist Responder Kits and Mobile Surveillance Equipment.
Mayor and Council, my name is John Brembo. I'm a lieutenant at your Prescott Police Department. What you have before you today is just an approval for us to submit a grant application to the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for funding in the total amount $88,500 for public safety equipment. You'll be real familiar, there's two different pieces of equipment that we're looking at. You'll be very familiar with the first part. Last year at this time, we made a similar grant application, which was approved, and the council recently approved us to purchase nine chemical, biological, nuclear, and radiological gas masks for our SWAT team or our tactical team. When we initially made that grant application, it was for 17 of those masks to cover our entire team. We were only partially funded for that. So the nine masks that were recently approved will only go to nine individual members of our SWAT team.
You have to draw straws to see?
Right. I'm not quite sure how to get the other ones, or who I decide to give them to. I guess we'll base it on seniority or who we can expend, but if we want to fully outfit our SWAT team and keep them safe, we need the additional eight masks. So we'd like the opportunity to go back to them and ask for the additional funding for that project that we started last year. The second part to this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on the masks, if you have any questions on that. The second part of that is new equipment. It is a command piece of equipment, as well as a surveillance piece of equipment, something that we don't currently have, and that we don't currently have with our other regional partners, with the Alpay County Sheriff's Office, Prescott Valley Police Department, as well as the Chino Valley Police Department. This piece of equipment is going to allow us, when we have to come together for a major event, to have communication ability that we don't have now, information sharing that we don't have now, and in the way of surveillance and things of that nature. This command kit essentially is a mobile command post that's not tied to a vehicle that we could set up anywhere. If we had an incident and we needed a mobile command center with a surveillance component to that, large events that we have in the downtown area where we're tasked with doing security, having surveillance cameras downtown would assist us in that, where we can't see everything all the time. But this particular piece of equipment would come with high-definition wireless cameras that would feed back to this command center. This command center can be bridged with other command centers. So if we were working jointly with the Sheriff's Office, and they had a command center and we had one, we'd be able to both see exactly the same thing. So when we met as agencies, we decided to go forward with this, us being the first one coming forward to ask for a grant to get the initial equipment, which would be one command center, and two, what they refer to as drop kits or high-definition cameras. Then each agency would take another piece, and we'd keep adding to this till we have basically a regional cachet of equipment that we could use on a large-scale event if we needed to. So it's something that we're doing in conjunction with our other law enforcement partners. I would include fire with that, too, but it's something that, right now, we're just looking for the approval to go forward with the grant application.
Mayor, thank you very much, and Lieutenant, thank you. My only question, this is mostly for curiosity, the camera system, does it have some sort of an anchoring system that comes along with it?
It does. It's a tripod system that we could set up, and there's different ways that we can secure it. The company does have different options so that we won't just see it walk away at $20, $20-plus thousand apiece. But yes, we do have security measures for those.
We can set that up and make sure Lammersen's not cheating on his diet.
Jealousy won't get you anywhere.
Comments from public? If you get cut back on the grant this time, what would you take first? The units?
If we're given the option between the two, the personal protective equipment would be the higher priority, obviously. We want to protect our people first.
Okay. Okay, you have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve the submission of grant application to AZDOHS in the amount of $88,500 for public safety equipment.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
H.
Item 2H, Approval of Purchase of Eight-Each PhysioControl LifePak Series 15 Electrocardiograph EKG Monitor Defibrillator from PhysioControl Incorporated in the Total Amount of $239,700, City Contract Number 2015-116.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here before you this afternoon to seek your approval to expend the monies, a portion of the monies that were appropriated in the current fiscal year. The monies that were appropriated were $300,000. We're looking to expend $239,700 to replace what in the medical field would be considered very antiquated equipment. Our current monitors, as they're commonly referred to, our EKGs, are roughly a decade and a half old, and in the medical equipment arena, that is an antique. Our new LifePak Series 15 presents us with new opportunities in the field to field treat, along with better, offer a sense of diagnoses, to better improve patient outcomes for those experiencing a sudden cardiac arrest or an acute myocardial infarction. That said, we've looked at a variety of different ones and opted to go with our regional partners and explore the LifePak Series 15. That is currently what our private enterprise Lifeline Ambulance is using, and we felt it's in the best interest to standardize things, and hence the sole source. The purchase, as annotated, is for eight of these devices. That allows for one on each of our frontline apparatus, one on our reserve apparatus as well. Kind of in closing, as far as the outdated equipment, this is replacing. It's 15 years old, as I mentioned. Right now, we lose one of these to Phoenix once a month, for almost a month, just getting repairs. The new system provides for capnography, which allows for tidal flows, and I won't get into the finer details, but probably one of the most unique and positive patient outcomes that this will provide is shorten the time from diagnoses in the field to getting a heart attack victim to the cath lab to balloon, as they call it in the industry, and clear the blockage. And we hope that with this added technology, that it'll allow us to have more positive patient outcomes than we currently experience. With that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you may have.
Mayor, thank you. Chief, are the old units going to be traded in? What's going to happen to them?
They will get a trade-in feature. They nowhere near are the return on the investment. It's kind of like self-contained breathing apparatus. The front-end expenditure is probably 50-fold of what the return on the investment is when you go to surplus those items.
And then the secondary question is with the battery packs. I mean, in 10 years, 15 years, a lot has changed in battery technology. What's our anticipated battery life? Are we also buying reserve batteries, et cetera?
Yeah, usually the operational piece of that is maintained through a separate line-item budget to replace batteries as they come due. My experience with radios and technologies such as this sort is if you don't have a battery replacement on a recurring basis every couple of years, then as much as they are allowed to discharge and then recharge, they eventually run their life. And that is usually maintained through a line item within our emergency medical services budget.
Thank you.
Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, along with some of my earlier comments through today's discussion, you know, with the demographic shift of Prescott...
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's huge. I mean, I appreciate you bringing something like this forward. However, again, it raises a little bit of question with regards to model and Fire Department versus medical delivery service from the Fire Department, you know. I would expect at some point, and I don't know when that's going to be, that instead of big red fire trucks, and I realize the argument for the jaws of life and various different things, and I realize what the ICMA studied with, or study indicated with dispatch and identification of level of service that needs to be dispatched, at what point are we going to be entertaining the opportunity to maybe look at some sort of medical SUVs or something of that nature, instead of just always sending a big red fire truck to medical calls?
I fully understand the challenges that that presents. First, as a Fire Department, we outlived our name as fire, frankly. Fire has traditionally been called, stuck with us for decades, centuries even. That said, our industry has changed, and with that, a good percentage, 80-plus, minus 80%, is emergency medical services. That said, we are an all-risk response agency. A lot of times, the truck is needed, especially in the environmental, that we work with road crashes, and those that are also secondary to that are emergency medical services. For the normal patient encounter, we are called to a residence, and it's a medical experience. A transitional response-type vehicle, as you describe, is probably a feasible option to added efficiency of the entire system. I think in the long run that there are tweaks to the system that need to be made, and as we've already had some preliminary conversations with our collaborators, Central Yavapai being the primary one, along with Lifeline Ambulance, I think we will continue to look for those efficiencies to see where we can change some of those big responses. As a Fire Chief, I get exposed and asked the question all the time, why does a firetruck, an ambulance show up to all my calls for service? There's some of those that are very easy to answer, and it's based upon the critical tasks that need to be performed. It takes probably about five sets of hands to manage a cardiac arrest. The other piece of that is those calls that don't require that. The unfortunate event that somebody walks in and stubs their toe probably doesn't require a Fire Department piece of apparatus to respond to that, but the only way to control that is at the entry point into the emergency medical system, which is through the dispatch center and those priorities. And I think that was what was gleaned out of the ICMA study. I think we will be able to limit some of those calls for service, sending the big red truck, and through our effective partnerships with our neighbors and collaborative efforts, I think that is how we best approach that issue.
Thank you.
Chief, what... Thank you, Mayor. What's the warranty on these? I mean, you got a...
That one, I'm going to defer to my technical reference.
I mean, these are quite expensive. I hope we got a couple-year warranty on that. And do we have a, like, a drop replacement?
Yeah, this is Chief Moser. He'll speak to the specifics of the technical side.
You drop in the toilet, do you get a replacement, or are we going to...
Mayor and Council, thank you for asking that question. Yeah, I believe if my recollection is correct, it's a two-year warranty, and what they do is they automatically take it down. They give us a replacement in the meantime, so that unit does not go out of service while they're doing the warranty work. And then these agencies know that it's in their best interest for continued business to work hand-in-hand with us. So even past that warranty, our experience has been they're usually very willing and eager to assist us in whatever way possible.
They obviously are needed. They just don't look as cool as the police thing we just approved.
Police has a lot more cool stuff sometimes.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you. And just in follow-up to Councilman Lammersen's comments, when this discussion continues and we're buying equipment related to the EMS side, Support 74 used to play that role for the city of more of an emergency medical response. So I'd like to hear some of that history in the future about the success and failures of doing that with that unit and the manpower we had at the time.
Yeah, and just a tad bit of commentary on that is actually the fire service by its nature, fire-based EMS is probably here to stay. If you talk to the private enterprise and private ambulance company, regretfully perhaps, but to a degree, we have supplemented their service levels by having fire trucks available in communities as a standing army. It was a business niche. It was a business decision made in the late '70s, but we're actually taking trips back into the '70s. In my case, I'm old enough to remember Emergency and Johnny and Roy. That type of vehicle is not as far-fetched in today's world, and it was very present in the '70s and early '80s when this first got off the ground. It's continually, because that was an efficient way then, and it seems to cycle back.
Chief, you just blew by Arnold on this one. That was a TV show called Emergency.
I remember it had the red gumball light, I think.
Just a note, Chief, under financial impact, it shows this current fiscal year 16 budget, that should be 15.
That is correct, in the current year. Yes, sir.
Dana, you need to note that. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve the purchase of eight-each PhysioControl LifePak Series 15 Echo Cardiograph EKG Monitor Defibrillators from Physio, yeah, PhysioControl, Inc. in an amount of $239,700, City Contract Number 2015-116.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. It's time for the Allison Show.
Legislative update.
Everyone's been waiting with bated breath. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Today's the 44th day of the 52nd legislative session. We still have 1,100 bills posted. Only five of the... Only five of those have passed to date, so what that means is we are in the fast and furious pace of the legislative session. Three of those bills have been signed, and just for reference, one of those bills was the TPT contracting bill, one of the bills that passed, excuse me, was the TPT contracting bill, where there was sister, sister bills in the House and in the Senate. Karen Phan carried 2590 in the House, and that has moved forward, as expected, and is ready for the governor to sign for implementation, because we are already into the fiscal year and are being impacted by the current interpretation that the Department of Revenue has for construction. I wanted to start with a couple of new bills that I would recommend that we discuss and likely oppose and work with our legislators on. The first of those is House Bill 2008. That is a striker bill for fireworks. We have fireworks again. Every year, we have fireworks. This bill actually would make some changes to the cities and towns and counties that are under 500,000 population. You might recall last year, that year's legislation for fireworks did allow us to prohibit the use and sale and allowed counties to prohibit the use and sale when there were stage-one fire restrictions in place. In this version, we would be allowed to restrict the use and sale, and then there are a couple of caveats, that we can prohibit the sale of permissible consumer fireworks on days other than May 20th through July 6th, unless the state or federal agency calls a stage-one fire restriction. It does not require that fire restriction to be in our county, which is odd, but I didn't write this bill. The next section would allow us to prohibit the use of those fireworks between June 24th, well, any day except for June 24th through July 6th, high fire season, and December 24th through January 3rd of each year, unless a federal or state agency implements a stage-one or higher fire restriction. Again, doesn't require that to be in our forest. The remaining information is a little bit more concerning about how folks down in Phoenix are understanding or not understanding wildfire danger. There's 100-foot prohibition within, near a hospital or public school, so you can't set off fireworks within 100 feet of that. Of course, you might be in the forest when you're doing that, outside of your 100 feet. And there's other language about signage that we are not able to provide anymore if this passes. So I have reached out to Representative Phan and let her know that we are concerned about it, and obviously, she's been an advocate for our desire to be able to prohibit both the use and the sale of fireworks, at least in rural Arizona. There are other concerns in Phoenix, but likely not as great as we have up here. Another fire bill, two fire bills that have been moving forward, Senate Bill 1335, I'd mentioned in a prior session with you. There is a sister bill, House Bill 2005, that's moving right now. I've also reached out to Karen Phan on that, and what that would do is limit our ability to require fire access roads in certain parts of the community. And the concern with the current language is that it could also prohibit some of our specific requirements here about fire access roads, grades, construction materials, and obviously, we have winter in Prescott, which Phoenix doesn't have to worry about as much. House Bill 2254, municipal tax exemption, which if fully implemented, would eliminate our ability to continue to collect residential rental tax, which represents about $1.12 million annually to the city of Prescott, $87 million annually to all cities and towns that collect that tax. It hadn't moved for a while. It was stricken from two House consent calendars, but it is on House Cow tomorrow. I've reached out to Karen Phan and Representative Campbell on that, and I feel like they will stand with us on that and attempt no vote and reach out for other votes to vote no on that bill. Senate Bill 1079, solid waste collection, multifamily housing, passed the Senate last week on a 24, 5, and 1 no vote, and is going to be going through the House now. That would discontinue the city's option to be the sole-source provider of trash collection for multifamily housing and make that commercial, and open it up to competition from private haulers, reducing the spread of costs between both residential and multifamily, single-family residential and multifamily housing. One last bill I wanted to point out on concerns is House Bill 2142, and that is a bill that would affect WIFA. That has seen some support from some communities. We need to be looking a little bit harder at that. It's very confusing language, but the concern is that it could damage the long-term financial sustainability of WIFA, and we have relied on them, as you saw earlier today, for quite a number of programs in order to extend and improve our water and wastewater infrastructure in the city of Prescott. On the bright side, aside from the TPT reform bills moving forward in order to keep most of the contracting sales tax at the point of construction versus the point of sale, House Bill 2324, intergovernmental agreements, indemnity, which would assist us when we have concerns about indemnity clauses that ADA forces on us if we're going to receive a project from them. That has continued to move forward, and we would expect that to continue through to fruition this session. And then finally, what you've probably all been waiting for is House Bill 2563, Health Facility Substance Abuse Recovery, which is our bill that Representative Campbell has graciously carried. Did actually see a little bit of movement today. Didn't even notice it was on the calendar, but things have been popping up on calendars left and right this week. It did pass okay out of rules this morning and is on the caucus calendar today for discussion. And you may be aware that when we went down last Monday to the House Children and Family Affairs Committee, that our bill did pass out of House Children and Family Affairs on a 7, 1, and 1 vote. There were some conditions placed upon that, though, that the committee chair and I would say the vast majority of the committee members were interested in the legislature hosting a stakeholder meeting, and that they desired to see some amendments. They were concerned about how broad the bill was written as it was introduced, and so we are looking at that, and I will be planning to go down tomorrow for a stakeholder meeting that the legislative committee has called.
Thank you, Allison.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we possibly go into E-session in order to get legal advice on this pending legislation.
I'll second that.
Motion made in seconded, that the council go into E-session for legal advice on bill number?
2563.
2563.
Any comment? Okay, let's vote.
Passes 6 to 1. Councilmember LaSalle dissenting.
Take a five-minute break, and you want to use this room, or we can go in where we want to go. We stay here. Y'all ready to go home? See you later. We'll come back here. Okay, we're back in open session, and our next item is item J.
This year 16 and subsequent budgets, council discussion, direction, and possible action.
Mayor and Council, this item was put on the agenda and will remain on the agenda as basically now through adoption of the budget. It provides an opportunity for any council comments, discussions, actually, any council action which may be deemed timely without having to wait for a future meeting.
So this will be on ever, ever agenda to get that?
Mayor, I've got a few, if you will. You all were distributed the responses to some questions that I asked of staff related to the budget, and the one that I'd like to focus the time and attention on, or I should say, let me go through that list real quick, just, and then focus on one of them. How do we calculate cost recovery for the city manager, clerk, legal, HR, tourism division? How much money is coming from the general fund for tourism? Are we currently recovering the director of economic initiative salary and expense from the airport enterprise fund? Where is the city in bringing rental rates and fees to market and above? Please refresh my memory about when fees were last adjusted, if they are coming close to covering our costs, and if we are considering increasing fees, and this was related to community development, building, and engineering. And then, can we get an update about the tourism sales managers, efforts, successes, et cetera? The two that I would like to focus on and discuss is, number one, how do we calculate our internal cost recovery? Right now, and included in the packet that the manager provided is the council policy, the city's policy on the budget, and those costs are about 50/50 general fund, 50/50 enterprise funds. I would like to reevaluate that model. We have some enterprise funds that are very healthy, in which we dedicate quite a bit of staff time, too, that I think could potentially take on a heavier load of those internal service costs, and I'd like to have that looked at by our staff. I'd like to address that going forward. If there is opportunity to relieve pressure in the general fund, that's an area that I have interest as a member of this council. In addition to that, as we're looking at our fees and our cost recovery, you know, I'm always one to say, let's make sure we make it easy to do business in Prescott, which I agree with 100%. Let's be competitive in the marketplace. Agree with that 100%. Some members of this council are talking about tax increases. I'm interested in focusing some time and attention on our current fee structures and looking at revenue opportunities under our current umbrella that exists before we start going down that path. So that was part of the questions related to our fees for planning and zoning, engineering, building, et cetera. We did just lower our impact fees, but that's based upon our actual needs and not some nebulous number. So I want to understand if we can look for cost recovery opportunities in this budget and future budgets. It may make it more expensive in some areas, but that's based upon somebody's need or use of the city, not every single person coming out of pocket to subsidize somebody's services that are being provided. So those are some areas that I wanted to discuss and see what we may be able to get to.
Any response? Charlie, my question, in looking at this, and I don't have this pack, are you thinking that possibly there's other enterprise accounts that might be created that where user fees could relieve the general fund?
I think that that could be a step two, Mayor, certainly. I think looking at our existing enterprise funds and understanding what their actual use and impact of the internal service funds, city manager, clerk, legal, HR, et cetera, would be, budget, there may be an opportunity to look at alternative or alternate enterprise funds going forward, looking for revenue-specific opportunities to pay for services that are being provided either internally or externally. And I'm just going to put it out there, I'm not sold on running out and proposing a tax increase at this point. I want to understand a lot more about where we are, so that if that's where the city council majority wants to go, we can sit in front of the public and say, we've looked at every single alternative. We have potentially a $2 million budget shortfall this year to deal with. What do you think next year is going to be, and the year after it? We have a lot of forecasting that needs to be done, and that has been something that's opened my eyes quite a bit to, how do we cost recover across the city? And I think that we need to look at changing our current policy.
Well, in my mind, then we, as a component of that, we need to look at the real numbers that have increased this year, that has put us in this shortfall position, because we have to know what those numbers are to really understand why we have a shortage. Am I making sense? What has made our, if our income is flat, what has created the shortfall that is new this year that we never had before?
You know, one example of that, Mayor, we saw tonight where there was $300,000 budgeted for the LifePaks for the fire department. It ended up costing only $239,000. So are we getting real numbers from the departments when they present the budget? It would really help us a lot if we could get real numbers, or as close as possible.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have the same level of questions I had last week that I had the week before. You know, we have proposed expenditures for personnel in various departmental jobs versus the revenue that we have. We only have so much money coming in. I don't know why we would sit and project expenditures based on projections to begin with. Last year, we took in X amount of dollars. I don't know why I would be sitting here contemplating, we're going to take in more money. I do understand the grants that we've asked for, and I do understand, like Councilwoman Wilcox was saying with regards to the $300,000 deal, that didn't come out of our general fund. That came from somewhere else, and while I realize it's taxpayer money, it came from somewhere else. It didn't come out of our general fund. I'm very concerned over our general fund, which supports the largest expenditures are in public safety, police and fire and dispatch, comes out of that general fund. And that general fund has all these pressures, and I have questions with regards to personnel expenditures out of that very general fund, especially with regards to some of the reasons why we're falling short. Some of the shortages are coming because of retirement systems, not of which some of the folks that work for us had anything to do with some of the failures down in Phoenix or down with the unions down there. However, the fact of the matter still remains that when 70% or thereabouts of your general fund is spent on one particular area of your entire community, and I keep looking at that, you know, it's just like, I'm concerned that we would go out and hire, when we have a full array of fully qualified wildland firefighters, fully trained, ready to go, those are the guys, they're already in PRSP. You don't even have to argue whether they get put in ARS or PRSP, they're already there. I don't understand when, admittedly, I just heard it again today from the chief, you know, 80% of our calls don't have a thing to do with fire, has to do with medical calls, et cetera. Okay, that, I understand that, and I understand why we need the big fire truck. I understand why we need a building to put the big fire truck in, but if one of the biggest threats that we have to the community is wildland fire, why aren't the guys that we hired to do that job doing that job? That's what we hired them for, and they're fully trained, and they're already in PRSP, just a question. So I do have some concerns over a budget that contemplates doing different things than using the personnel we already have.
Mayor, if I could, just briefly, looking at the agenda item, so that something comes out of the topic I was discussing, I would like to direct staff to take a look at our current policy related to internal cost recovery, determine if there are alternatives that they can present back to this council. It's structural to the entire budget process, and if it's something we want to change, I think they should know that now, so that they can build their budgets around it.
In some respect, Charlie, you and I just agreed. For example, Mr. Attorney says we have a right, or we have the authority, to go around town and check and see what's fire-safe and what isn't fire-safe, and ticket people just like you do for speeding, or anything else that's being done unsafe, and that's cost recovery. Okay? So I'm just sharing that with you. We have, we have a number of different things that various people in different parts of our organization can be doing to help costs recover.
I've got a question, because in this budget, we talked about, Mr. McConnell had on the board the cost of doing business in this community when it comes to hiring. business in this community when it comes to hiring five new officers, police dog, and that, that ticket number, I believe, was somewhere around $800,000, was it not, Mr. McConnell, for the year?
Seven to 800,000.
Okay. Here's where my problem is. I, I have a problem that I believe this community deserves to have a special enforcement group. We had one once before. I don't know how to get council to agree that our focus, based upon what Chris and Charlie have been trying to do with drug and alcohol houses, based upon infiltration of people that have come to this community, I believe we need to have that group back in place. The question becomes is how do we fund that specific operation, and is it necessary in the community? I made the statement last year about the library and the amount of money we spend funding services at the library being $2.6 million, 6 million, or 600,000 coming from the library district and 2 million coming out of the general fund. I made the suggestion last year, and this council decided that we're going to charge for the meeting rooms. We heard a huge outcry about, oh, we can't do that, everything in the library needs to be free. And a group was put together to try to determine how we were going to offset some of the costs at the library in this budget. I'm one that's going to sit here and tell you, I want to take a million dollars from the library and put in special enforcement for five new officers to clean this town up. I believe the library needs to start doing something to help its own existence to keep it functional. I know I'm going to get chastised over saying it, but this is our town, this is my town that's being taken away by people that have infiltrated it with their own personal problems. We have police officers that don't have the right tools to take care of the problems. But yet, we're still offering a facility that does not charge its patrons one penny for operation, and I am offended by that every time I think about it. So at some point in time, if I don't see something in this budget that determines those things that are important to me, I'm going to vote no. Because I brought it up last year, the library's had a chance to do something, they haven't. The police department needs help, I'm here to help them, and that's where I'm coming from. And I don't want to bring it out in the budget conversations, but the city manager put it on the wall showing us what the true costs are for enforcement, and we got to find the money somewhere.
Mayor, you know, and no matter what we do, and no matter what we save, there's, there's something that's affecting us that we have no control over, and it needs to be tackled at a state level, and that's PSPRS. You know, this is what, this is what's getting us. 2012, an increase of 281 ongoing additional liability. 2013, it jumped 415,000. 200, or 2014, $417,000. Fiscal year 15, this paper says we got an additional $850,000 ongoing additional liability. How much more, you, if you took the library to zero, that would get eaten up in almost no time at all. That's what needs to be fixed, and it's only going to be fair, because eventually, I don't know what the city's going to do, because eventually, that's all we'll have, because it doesn't show any signs of slowing. And is it, is it fair to the people that are, are entering the force now, that are they going to have something when, when all said and done? I don't, it, this is bad. This is the problem that we have. This is, if we didn't have those ongoing expenses, it wouldn't be too much of a problem. But what does that add up to? I think it's saying, after 16, it's, that's another $3 million. That's more than we spend on the library. There's only so much library to take, there's only so much parks and rec. You know, eventually, it's going to, it's going to get grim.
Okay. And you're bringing that up, and I appreciate it. Because what's not grim, it's people paying their own way. When you have a library where the citizens built the building, and outfitted the building for our citizens in this community, times have changed, it's time for those very users of that facility to start coughing up some cash to pay for their enjoyment. I have to do that every time I want to go golfing, every time I want to play softball, and, and we have the, the police department, let's just not say the retirement, but we have this town that people want to say it's the number three town in the country to go visit because of the ambiance. Well, I don't think driving into Prescott on the east side to see three converted hotels as drug and alcohol facilities is being my number one priority. And when they bring in the kind of riff that they bring in, we need to make sure our police department has the tools they need to have to function with.
Without a doubt. And I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, you're talking about financial stress, we see where it's at, and maybe we need to put our, our lobby efforts from the city of Prescott into talking with our state people and, and starting to really put some pressure on that this needs to be addressed. It's too easy to kick it down the road when it's just a really big problem. You know, it's going to get critical. And who's, who is that fair to if it gets to that point of being critical? Not fair to anybody.
Mayor, we need to keep in mind that we are sales tax dependent. We've talked about that many, many times, and we need a more sustainable way to fund city operations, whether it's public safety, the library, streets, whatever we're doing. And unlike Charlie, I, I think we do have to ask the voters for sales tax increase to cover some of these things. And we've got to put our heads together and figure out how to package it, what's going to be the most meaningful, have the most impact, that people will vote for. I just see that as the, the only way, well, not the only way, but a, a critical way of addressing some of the mandated expenses that we have to live with.
Just, I just see that, that, we, so we pass a tax that's fif, or half a cent just to go to that, that's 6 million bucks a year. At the rate we're going, that's absorbed before eight years is even up. You know, then what? Now we got an additional sales tax, additional liability, and nothing's been fixed, we just kicked the can down the road again. That's, that's just what I'm saying. I just see this, and, and it, we need to get a state fix on this, and I don't know what that is, but I'm sure there's some brilliant people down there that can figure out a way to make this a sustainable thing. And maybe that's just, instead of treating us as an individual city in public safety retirement, maybe they use us as a pool, just like they're collecting us. Why, why is Prescott at 76%? Some other city is at 40%? And I understand that there's some cities that right now are at 120%. Could you imagine if we had that right now? Would we, would we be having a library? Would we even be able to have parks and rec, anything else? They would just consume us. So until this problem is fixed, it's, it's just going to dog us down.
Well, the other side of that problem, at least from my, my feeling, is the state needs to allow us to do what we need to do as far as finding avenues to provide funding for these services. If it comes to public safety, they need to give us the flexibility on the water bill or on our, our tax bill to be able to charge for the services that they're getting, meaning police, meaning fire. Fire Central Yopai charges 600 some thou, 600 and some dollars per structure. We don't charge 60 bucks per structure. We have to have the state give us some relief to the two very categories that are creating, crippling this community, and that's public safety. And that's just a true statement. So until we get relief from the legislature rewriting all the policies when it comes to retirement, or they give us the flexibility to let us handle it from our standpoint, we're always going to be in that box you talk about.
Mayor, I, I think everybody's got a valid point in whether it be the possibility of taxes, finding our fee structure, or cutting certain departments. What I'd like to see is, as we go forward, we, we may have to have Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, depending on what we all come to agree. If, if we don't see any relief, then we need to fall back to Plan B. Or we don't feel that there's a public consensus on a tax, then we got to Plan C, cut the library or the parks, or whatever it is. So I think we need to have some options in front of us.
And I think we got to avoid that downward spiral that we talk about of quality of life here. Once you get rid of a lot of the things that brought us here to begin with, you know, it doesn't matter, your quality of life has gone down without the, the parks and rec system. That's why a lot of people come here. If that just falls into disarray, where are we at?
It's a bad hit, it's a bad ball pushing it uphill.
Yeah.
Chris, I don't disagree with your comment. They do come here. A lot of times, they stay in hotels and motels, and they spend bed tax money for the opportunity to come here and use all these amenities. And here again, it's priorities. And while I understand we have a dedicated tax, sales tax for part of the roads, and I understand we have for the general fund, what we don't have is something specifically to take care of police, fire, et cetera. But what we do have is the ability, as Mr. Palladini will validate, we do have the ability to charge for some of the services that we provide the public at this particular point in time, using public employees, and we don't charge for it. There are things that we can do differently than what we've been doing. And until such point is we make some of these personnel, that's the best word I can think of, personnel type adjustments as to how you deploy this, I'm not prepared to support a budget until I know that we've overturned, and I'm not prepared to just say we're going to raise taxes, until we overturn every rock that we can possibly overturn, to see how we can address the shortfall for the projected expenditure, if indeed, we need that expenditure in total to begin with. Maybe we don't need a million dollars extra in the budget. Maybe what we needed to look at is, why is that budget where it is? And if it happens to have, I don't know, proposed farming out of this, or this, or this, what can we do in-house for people that we're already paying to take care of those things? You heard a little bit of that discussion today with regards to doing some in-house stuff at the fire department. I'm just sharing that with you. I mean, there's processes that we can look at, how to change some of the things and some of the culture that we sit up here as municipal legislators, trying to figure out how to grapple with everything, instead of saying, well, the state's got to do this, or the state's got to do that. I don't know that we've done what we need to do yet and what we can do in order to help transform how we think up here.
And we have to continue to do those things, and we should. Even if things were, if money was flowing in like no tomorrow, we should continue to do those things. But you know, is that going to save us $850,000 this year and every year going forward? You know, that's what, that's what the thing is. It's going forward, we see this growing.
No action taken on?
I want to retire today so I can get my...
Okay. I think we've already taken the action, so. Any public comments on the last issue? Come on down. You got 40 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Richard Steele, I'm in 2440 Sequoia. I, I couldn't agree with all of you any more than I do. The budget, the revenue side, well, it is what it is. And we're, we have a dependent revenue side. We're dependent on people coming into town, people staying here, we're dependent for our revenue. If they took one year off and don't come here for whatever reason, no matter how good the budget is, it's blown to smithereens. So we, we do have to focus on what gives us our revenue. I agree with Councilman Blair. I mean, average, maybe a half a million a year increase just to cover pension costs. We have to raise taxes at least that much every year just to keep up with that, and we have to do it. There's no other way around, until the state decides, we're not going to award money anymore for political reasons, we're going to do it for economic reasons, and I don't see that happening with the current president in office. So we can talk about it forever, but until the state moves, we, our hands are tied legally, they're tied. And we need our people, we need our police, we need our fire, and so on and so forth. We can't do without them. The equipment side, Councilman Lamerson makes a great point. Yet, we don't heat with coal stoves anymore, we don't cook in a wood stove, we don't light with whale oil or any of that, I know that is nonsense. We just don't have the fires we did at one time. Basically, the fire department is out there doing auto accidents. That's a big reason for our fire calls in almost all communities today, not just Prescott. Can we look at rescue vehicles instead of half a million dollar fire trucks? Maybe? Can we lease equipment rather than buy it? No corporation is going to buy a piece of equipment for half a million dollars and put it on a, a factory floor and it's used 2% of the time. That guy's going to get fired. The controller would never hear such an act. You had major corporations in this country with 30 and out pensions. They went broke, bankrupt. Can't do it. It's unfundable. No matter how much you price your product, or how many of them you made and sold, it killed the company. And the list of that is hundreds, from Pullman to International Harvester, General Motors, they all crashed because at one time, they didn't have a pension problem, because everyone was a new hire. But then everyone retired and they had to replace them to boot. Now you have wages on top of pensions, and it keeps compounding, and it, it will crash. It's a bad system, it's unfundable. But like I said, until the legislators at the state and federal level quit doling out money for political purposes and dole it out for economic purposes, we're not going to shake this. The pain level has to get that high, and we're on that trajectory. It's getting there fast, because people like me, I voted with my wife last year, we left our community. We came here. And I, I sympathize with all of yous. But we're going to have to raise taxes, and I, I think I'm the most conservative man in Prescott, but that's the truth. That's the truth. We're going to have to raise taxes, and we're going to have to do the right thing. That's all there is to it.
Why it's a dilemma for us is because we didn't create it. We just have to try to manage it.
Yes, sir. I get it.
And it's difficult.
It sure is difficult, you know? And, and it's, it's hard to sell it to the taxpayers when it's not tangible and they can't see it and reach out and touch it. When they can see a, a change and they like it, they're okay with it.
Yeah.
But when they don't see anything different, they're just, they read about it, or their neighbor tells them, doesn't sit well. And I don't care what it is.
Yeah. Well, don't leave town, we may need you.
I'll be here, and I'll be supporting every one of yous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Craig, you heard it all.
Yes, Mayor, we have budget workshop number two on March 10th.
You know, I find, what I find interesting, Mayor...
Make sure we, we have the same opportunity on the next one, too. Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to say, what I find interesting, in my time going back about six years ago, that man sitting in that chair said, when it gets to 15 and 16, we're going to have a hard time with this budget. And we're here today.
Yeah. And it's accelerated by some unforeseen situations that we, we had. And as you say, Chris, they're not going to get smaller. They're going to increase every year, because we have the obligation to keep meeting the needs of, of the people that work for the, for the city.
And Mayor, the promises were made. When they signed up for that, to take that career with that stress level, I mean, we made a promise to them, and we got to keep that, and just going down this road, I don't see how we keep that promise. And, and you know what? I'm going to be gone in November, it'd be easy for me to kick this down the road. But I think being responsible, we have to do something, because it is coming. You know, you can see, you can see that train coming down the track.
Yeah. We're adjourned.